For the six o'clock meeting for April the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome. Glad to see you here this evening. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Haupt to give an invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance, wisdom, and the work that we're about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for wisdom and guidance in all decisions. Please continue to bless this county, state, and country, Lord. We need you now more than ever. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Moll, do we have adjustments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We do have two. The first is the removal of economic development under closed session. And the second item is to change the hearing, or actually the presentation, of item eight point one under administrative matters from the four o'clock to the six o'clock.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda?
Make a motion. Will we adjust?
All in favor? We are unanimous on that one, and we have no presentations this evening for recognitions or awards, and no appointments before the board. But we do have a public hearing. I believe we had Jen and Chad for that one, a public hearing to consider economic development incentive for Project Pivot.
Thank you, Chairman Neder and members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to present Epoch Solutions Limited doing business. Sorry, I clicked the thing. Doing business as Epoch Enviro, also known as Project Pivot, for an economic development incentive. I'm Jen Bozer, President and CEO of Iredell County Economic Development Corporation. Also with me is Chad Thomas, Vice President of Economic Development, who also led this project through the process. Epoch Enviro is an Australian company and a global leader and provider of sustainable polyfluorinated substances remediation technology. Polyfluorinated substances are a group of forever chemicals used to create products that resist heat, oil, stains, grease, and water. The company's technology is recognized as a naturally elegant solution that produces no waste other than a high-density concentrate ensuring zero environmental harm. The company selected the Statesville Commerce Center, a Class A speculative industrial building located off of U.S. Highway seventy and Barkley Road for their first U.S. manufacturing location. The project demonstrates that product development can accelerate the timeline and mitigate risk associated with a site for a potential project and help in competitive project selection of a location. Demand is already high for Epoch Enviro's product, with the company securing a production schedule through two thousand and twenty-four. The Statesville facility will employ up to two hundred and twenty-six employees for the U.S. market. In accordance with the Iredell County Economic Development Policy, Iredell EDC requests an economic development incentive to Epoch Enviro Company for up to ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, based on a capital investment of five million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and the minimum creation of a hundred and twenty-six jobs. The grant is performance-based and would be payable over five years based on seventy-five percent of real property and fifty percent tangible personal property. Payment is tied to the assessed value of new tax increment generated from the private investment by the company. The Statesville City Council approved an economic incentive grant last night, Monday, April seventeenth, and the state also approved a one-point-two-million-dollar job development investment grant last week. So with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions?
Do you mind explaining the process that goes through for economic development processes?
Sure. So the county has an incentive policy that we use to vet projects. It is based on industry type, the quality of the wages, the quality of the jobs, and there are other factors that you all look at that are discretionary. You know, the company's commitment, the environmental sustainability of their technology in this particular company. And what we do is we bring that project to you with all the facts that we know after the project fills out a form based on timelines, the investment that they're going to make, all kinds of disclosures. And then you tell us whether it's a project that you think fits within the parameters of your policy and your community. We then give them an offer. They accept or don't accept. Their choice is often made based on a lot of other factors other than the incentive. Usually, that's the very last piece. But it's usually based on their ability to find labor, their ability to find a site that meets their timeline, and whether they're going to be a good fit for a community. In this case, you've got an Australian company who's looking internationally into the U.S. They focused in on the Charlotte region. It was competitive. It needs to be competitive for us to offer an incentive. It was competitive against multi-states, which then allows the state to provide an incentive. Their incentive is based on jobs. Your incentive is based on investment, because the county, the local municipalities, generate their revenue off of tax value, property tax value, whereas the state generates their revenue off of wage and payroll tax. So those are kind of the key things that we look at. Then we have to, in this case, the J dig, the state announces first. Every time we do an incentive, we have to publish the incentive ten days prior to the public hearing, which we're here tonight. And if it's a state incentive, we go after the state so that they can kind of share the details of the project. They then go through a public hearing. I come up here, share it publicly. We allow the public the ten days notice so that they are aware of the project and an opportunity to come here and speak about the project. And then, once they get the incentive, they don't get a check day one. Actually, in North Carolina, and through your policy, they have to make the investment, what they stated as their investment threshold. They have to create the jobs at the wages that they promised, within the timeline that they indicated. And if they don't meet those timelines, they don't get paid anything. Also, once they do make those timelines, they have to pay their taxes before they can request repayment. So they have to be good, and they can't pay them late. So there's a lot of things that have to happen. The project can't just be promised, and they don't get a check. Once that happens, about a year after they've done all those things, they then can get paid their grant.
We're asked sometimes about that. I think you were talking to Chairman about that. But they have to meet the thresholds, and we appreciate the investments into the county because they create, you know, not only the property tax base, but the jobs as well.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're asked sometimes what the process is and what's the accountability on our side, and it is the threshold being met.
That's right. And there's a contract that they have to sign within, in your motion, a hundred and eighty days within the public hearing. If they don't sign their contract, there's no agreement. So there's a lot of steps in between to protect the county and the company to make sure that everything's agreed upon is fair.
And I think it's also important to notice that the incentive that is paid is after all those thresholds have been met. They pay the taxes, but they don't get a hundred percent of that back.
No.
They get a percentage of it back. So there is increased tax base, but there's also increased revenue from that that the county, the municipalities get a portion of, and then we share that back over a period of time with the company at a percentage.
That's right. So it's paid. In this case, the money is paid over a five-year period. And then, that's, I'm sorry, that described, I forgot what I was going to say, but that's right.
I think if I remember reading.
My time's up.
I remember reading right. This is their first company in the United States, right?
This is their first U.S. manufacturing in the United States. And it's in Iredell County.
Isn't that amazing?
It is. It is an Australian-based company.
And I think another important piece of this project is this is a speculative industrial development that the city of Statesville has a policy to support industrial development. And once that product's on the ground, the company can't take credit for that investment having been made. So there's another, it's but for the investment, the project wouldn't have happened. So anything that happens before the company makes their decision, they can't take credit for. In this case, the city of Statesville supported the spec building with an incentive over three years. Traditionally, it's a five-year incentive, so they're saving about, you know, three-fifths, or what, two-fifths, of what they would have had to pay. In your case, you're not incentivizing the company for the building at all because you guys didn't support or don't have an industrial speculative incentive policy. So, I mean, the project still gets the money from the state for the job development grant because it's required that the local community participates in order for them to access the million dollars from the state. So there's a lot of things at play that have to happen together. But in this particular case, that speculative development started about two years ago, and having a building ready is an incentive for you all to land a project.
And we've said before that economic and business growth needs to always outpace the residential. That's why it keeps the property tax rate low.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I will, any further questions? All right, then, I would like to open a public hearing for Project Pivot. Is there anyone that would like to speak? I have no one signed up to speak on Project Pivot. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there is a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive to be granted to Epoch Solutions LTD, DBA Epoch Enviro, better known for us in the past as Project Pivot, for a capital investment of up to five million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The total incentive award would be a total of up to ninety-nine thousand, four forty-one a year paid out over a five-year period. The incentive is contingent upon the contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days from the date of this public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Haupt. All in favor? Were you unanimous? So thank you, Jen, for the update.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Manager Moll, that takes us to the administrative matters this evening.
Are you going to start with the first one?
Yes, please.
The first item is a request from Iredell Statesville Schools for approval of funding for the new high school. And I believe Mr. Tim Ivy is here, and Dr. James are here to make the presentation to the board.
Good evening, gentlemen. Before you start, I've got one quick question I just want to ask. Tim, can you do two things at once over there? You can go.
Yes, I will be glad to.
Okay. I just want to, I'm asking if the information you're about to share with us this evening is the complete information that you've received, and it's the same information you've shared with your board?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it the complete information you've received? You've received this over several meetings.
I meant for the school board. This is everything that y'all have received, and you've shared with your board?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
If you want to start, you certainly can, and I can take it.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. County Manager Moll, glad to see you. It's been a while since we've been here. I was just thinking with the approval of the recent, just a few minutes ago, Mr. Brown might have some koala bears for his, when they come over from Australia, so. But good coating, I guess, because I need it on my ties and shirts, and that way they won't have any stains and everything will roll off. But we're here to present to you tonight Weathers Creek High School. It's been in the making for a while. Some of y'all were on the original committee. Facilities Task Force is a committee that was formed here in Iredell County over fifteen years ago. And I actually think Dr. Miller have come to several counties that I worked in to actually start or help start a Facilities Task Force there because there wasn't any long-range planning between the county commissioners and the school system. So I think we're unique when it comes to a county and school board. Collaboration is that we have projected out ten, fifteen years on what the needs of the schools are, and graciously, you guys worked with us to actually go asset tag all the equipment that's in our buildings. So you have a program now that gives you an idea of what capital expenditures are needed as far as roofs, heavy equipment, HVAC, et cetera. So it's a better way to project tax dollars and to spend it more efficiently. So I think we're well ahead of the curve. I would say that Weathers Creek probably shocked all of us when the price come in. But construction costs have seemed to quadruple. And so tonight, Mr. Ivy has several slides he'd like to present and talk to you. And we would like to walk away from here tonight with an idea on what the county provided towards the building of Weathers Creek High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Commissioners, I just want to start off by saying we appreciate all of your efforts from allowing us to first have the bond and then being willing to serve on the design committee that helped us be able to design Weathers Creek High School. I also want to, you know, make sure that everybody knows that when we started off with this, the original idea was to build a fifty-year low-maintenance building. And so that was what we were tasked with doing. And the design committee met approximately nineteen months, we're over sixty-eight different meetings. A typical timeframe for designing a project of this size is somewhere between sixteen and twenty months. And so the Design Review Committee, again, was made up of twenty-two stakeholders. It was board members, county commissioners, teachers' parents, community members. And we also had approximately twelve additional meetings on the school, including our Educational Task Force, Facilities Task Force, the couple of joint board and county commissioner meetings. So quite a bit of effort has gone in to trying to come up with a solution for this school. I also provided for you a timeline. I'm not going to go over every single one of these, but I think it's important to look at from when we started thinking about the bond to when the bond actually passed to the different meetings, how much of an inflation rate we've seen in construction cost. So in two thousand and eighteen, when the bond was just an idea, construction cost was two hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. Right now, what we're seeing is it's going up about three dollars a square foot each month, which is why, as you see, as we've gotten to the latter part of this timeline, you'll see that from March to April, it jumps about three dollars. And that's what we're hearing from people in the field who are actually quoting some of these buildings. But this information is provided for you, and it does go over the major milestones and facts that go along with the bond. The big ones that we wanted to talk about tonight was in October of two thousand and twenty-two, the Board of Education and the Facilities Task Force decided to modify four capital improvement projects in order to free up funding that could be used for the new high school. Now, granted, we know that it's not funding that was already allocated. So when we talk about this, we're talking about our efforts as a school system to be able to take something off the plate of the county so that we would be able to then essentially use that, if the county sell fit, for the high school. So I don't want to make sure it's implied the correct way that that's what it is. Instead of deciding to continue with replacement plans for these older buildings, we decided to reevaluate them, and our Board of Education decided to do renovations. The Iredell County Commissioners then also helped the school district by approving a request to use current expense fund balance to move that over to capital, and the Board of Education decided to approve the funds from the sale of Mountmore School to be used for these projects. And so I do have a breakdown real quickly of those, and you've also been provided those in your packet, along with the educational planning document that was provided to us from Ms. Moll and the updated document that we gave back to her showing where we had made those corrections with some projects from a meeting that we had with Facilities Task Force. So those projects to replace the Statesville High School CTE building and build a new field house was approximately thirteen point eight million dollars at that time. Of course, you know now prices have gone up. Lake Norman gym, the addition of classrooms there, we decided to keep the mega unit and reduce that to a gym only. Harmony's fourth and fifth grade wing, instead of a complete teardown, we decided to do a renovation project. And then the closing of ADR, which is consolidation of central services, the school board decided to use their current expense fund balance to be able to approve those. Now, based off what was anticipated, that was approximately thirty-eight million plus dollars. Then in December of two thousand and twenty-two, the ISS Board of Education and Facilities Task Force met and reprioritized their ten-year plan, decided to look over all of those projects and removed four capital improvement projects in an effort to help free up funding as well for the new high school. Those were a complete replacement of the old wing at West Middle, East Iredell Middle School, renovations to their cafeteria and multipurpose room, North Iredell Middle School, it's this classroom addition that was slated. And then Statesville High School had an eight-room addition that was on the plan originally, and those equaled about forty-six million dollars. So when you place those all together, you can see that totaling those, including the land that the school had purchased, which we did have a market evaluation done of the property, came in about between three and six million dollars is what we were told for the property. So I just selected four instead of being smack dab in the middle. And that equals all up to about eighty-eight million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So those were the types of efforts that the school system wanted to try to present to the county as a way to help free up funding that was, may have been obligated or anticipated to come up within the near future. So, of course, you guys know I'm here to request, from our Board of Education, on March twenty-fourth, they passed a resolution requesting a hundred and fifty million dollars, between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy million dollars for construction of the new high school, including all of the site work, and somewhere between twenty and thirty million dollars for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which is FFNE. So the total cost of construction, I broke it down here again, is between one fifty and one seventy. The last estimate we received was a hundred and seventy million dollars, and I've checked with multiple estimate companies. They all have mentioned that, right now, every estimate they're going to provide anybody is high because if they don't estimate high, they're going to end up being called on the carpet when it comes back, and they don't want to be in that boat, so every one of them is given high estimates. We all believe that when we are able to send this out for bid, that it is going to come back closer to what we believe it to be around a hundred and fifty, which is why we made that adjustment. But we won't know until we can get there. I also did a little research with the help of Dr. James and Scott Hager. There's a new high school being built in Burlington, Vermont. I provided you with an article for that. Their estimated cost for construction of a building alone, because it is a teardown of an old high school and rebuilding of the high school in the same spot, they're keeping all their athletic facilities. That school is very similar in size, just a little bit larger than ours, and their cost for their bond is two hundred million dollars for construction of the school building alone. That's a school building and the parking lots. Of course, you do know Vermont may have different queue lane requirements and things than we would have here, but the project is very similar. We also reached out to Cabarrus County Schools and did find out that the replacement cost for Northwest Cabarrus High School, which is a replacement of the building alone, again, keeping the high school, I mean, the athletic facilities, was a hundred and twenty million dollars, which they're anticipating. They haven't started that project yet, but that's what they're anticipating. Just so you're aware, our project for the building alone, based off of current building cost, is around ninety-three million dollars for the building itself. And then you have all of the infrastructure, roadways, athletic facilities, et cetera, that have to be placed due to guidelines. So the ninety-three million is just to build the actual structure. It's not to hook it up to any electricity, water, sewer, any of those things. That's just the building cost. When you look at a school, the cost has to include everything, including how do they get to the school, what's the length of the queue lane, et cetera. So I've been asked several times what would happen if we took the athletic facilities off. If you go down through the estimate, the estimate has everything listed for all the athletic facilities at thirty million dollars. If you take those completely off, then part of the infrastructure that comes through the athletic facilities to get to the school building aren't there. So based off of what we've looked at, it would be approximately twenty million dollars if you didn't add any athletic facilities, because you would still have to have the roadways and, again, the infrastructure for utility services that would need to go there. So the Board of Education understands that this is a critical need for us. We do have severe overcrowding in two of our larger schools and anticipate it to be well over the state allotted enrollment at both of those schools. One is currently over, one is right at the verge, and then, within the timeframe, we're going to be into what would be considered a critical need for those two schools. going to be into what would be considered a critical need for those two schools. We're willing to join with the county, the Board of Education, and the county are willing to join together to look at any other alternative funding sources. Those include the public-private partnership, which can be done in multiple different ways, and then also looking for a private vendor to provide major mechanical equipment and maintenance as a service. So I did want to give you some information on those two, based on some correspondence with Ms. Nieder. She wanted to know kind of what the different options were, and I'm not sure if all the commissioners have been apprised by that. So I'm going to take a couple of minutes and just kind of tell you what funding options, alternative funding options, the school system has researched, and then of course, we know that that is your decision. So one of the primary ones is the public-private partnership. This can be done in a lot of different ways, but Idaho County and Idaho Statesville Schools would look for a private industry, somebody to partner with to fund the remaining balance of the high school, whatever that is. I mean, if it's you have 80 and the rest of it you need to fund, they'll fund the rest of it and then work to make payments and work out a schedule. The debt's paid over time with potentially lower interest rates because the industry is the one who's going to be borrowing it, and because they do this, they have to have, they have a better borrowing power, potentially. That's not necessarily always true. Maintenance for the whole facility is often included in a payment plan, and most of them want to do this because they're taking on some investment on their side, and they want to provide payment for the life of the loan. So if it's a 30-year loan, they'll provide maintenance for the entire building with this process. That includes, you know, major mechanical roofing, flooring, doors, windows, you know, you name it, they're going to maintain it. Maintenance terms require that the building be considered in like-new condition at the end. So that's one of the advantages of a public-private partnership is many of them at the end are required to leave it in like-new, which means that they're going to have to replace the roof the last part of the time, you know, of the loan. So if it's 30 years, when they turn it over to you, it's going to have a new roof, new windows, new flooring, et cetera. That's part of the agreement, and that's all told upfront. Now, there are various ways that public-private partnerships work, so depending on how that would go and which company you would choose, there are a lot of varieties in how that would work. And we'd also have to work with the LGC and the Bond Council to find out if these things would be approved. So again, these are just options that we've explored and bringing to you guys, and we'll be glad to help you get in touch or go through that process with you if you think one of these resonates or would work better. With a public-private partnership, we would be required to follow a process that's similar to what you call design-build RFQ. Now, we already have a design for the school, but the design-build RFQ selection process means that we would solicit somebody to then be able to come in and do a build, finance, operate, and maintain for the high school. And that's kind of the wording that we would use for the procurement. So I just bring that up in case, you know, you guys were curious. The advantages of the private-public partnership or public-private partnership is there are potentially lower interest rates, you can borrow whatever you need to cover the remaining cost of the high school, payments are not required for the new school until it is turned over to the school system, which is one of the advantages that I did see is that they're willing to fund, many of them, the entire project upfront, and then once they turn it over to you at the end of the construction, that's when you would start to make some form of payment. And those can be structured any different way. The major maintenance cost is covered during the service agreement term, and this can be renewed after the debt is repaid. So you can go back into an additional service agreement with them at the end of the 30-year term if you want to, and they'll then continue to maintain the building. The service agreement can protect the investment over the term of the loan. It may reduce the overall construction cost, seeing as a lot of them, once it comes out, a lot of these private vendors or private industry partners also know builders and know ways to create additional savings that we may not have in the normal process of building a building. It's potential with a public-private partnership to include more than just the high school. Typically, using this form of funding is done for much bigger projects. School systems come in and they have them build out their 10-year plan for schools, or they do an analysis of where schools need to be, and based off that information, they can fund all of those projects at one time and go through that project. But the, Ken, we're just here to talk about the high school, but I did want you to know that they do have the potential to group larger projects together, and even if that's renovations, additions of other things, like the other needs that the school system has with the elementary school and those things that are listed on the document, they can do all of those at one time and include the high school with it, if that's something the commissioners would like to explore more. The disadvantages of any of these, including the one that I'll present after this, is that it increases the debt for schools. I mean, you have to borrow money. That's always a disadvantage when you have to borrow money because there's interest to it. So it costs you more to borrow than it does if you have it. The service agreement will increase the current expense budget because as part of the loan, there is a service agreement that is added in where the company maintains the building. And so that will cost that, but it could essentially be completely offset by the fact that they're maintaining the building and we're not having to because that's part of our agreement. So it could essentially be a wash, but it's without having an actual contract between the vendor and them in front of us, it'd be impossible for us to know. Now, the other option is the major mechanical equipment and maintenance as a service. So with this option, the county and the school board would work with a private industry partner or vendor, and they will fund the major mechanical equipment for the new high school. So the debt, again, is paid over time. They potentially can provide lower interest rates. The maintenance of the major mechanical equipment is included as part of the payment plan and lasts the life of the loan. These are typically 20-year plans, but can go up to 30 years, but they typically stretch them out 20. Maintenance terms require the major mechanical equipment to be considered in proper working condition at for their age at the end of the term. So please note that with many of the public-private partnerships, they want it to be like-new, and then most of the contracts that we've seen for this one say in proper working condition for their age, which is still great because any product that is 20 years old that is still working properly, and they guarantee it to work properly, that's a good life cycle for most of this equipment. So this option will require that the county and ISS to select a private industry partner. Do this, we would have to advertise this a specific way through the bid process. So we've already designed the high school, we've already had the paperwork together for this type of bid, if this is an option that we'd like to do, but we would have to know upfront before we send it out for bid that we were wanting to bid the high school with this as part of that process, seeing as it covers a portion of the cost. The advantages of using this option is potentially lower interest rates, it provides approximately $38 million to help cover the remaining cost of the high school, maintenance cost and the major mechanical equipment are covered, and the service agreement is required and protects the investment over the term of the loan. Now, some of the disadvantages is, again, you're borrowing money, so it increases debt, and school system doesn't have the ability to borrow money. So when I say you're borrowing money, I'm referring to the county, and we know that that would be something additional that would need to be taken on. It only covers a portion of the remaining funding needed to complete the project, so there would still be a funding gap with this, and repayment and service agreement will increase the current expenditure, expense budget, but some of the cost will be offset. Seeing as it's not covering all of the building, there'll still be some maintenance costs that are associated with the school system because it only covers the major mechanical. So here's the proposed funding options broken down. If you utilize the funds that are freed up, that the task force and the Board of Education work through, it looks something like this. We have an estimated 150 to 170 million dollars, and 20 to 30 million dollars for FFNE. That equals somewhere between 170 and 200 million dollars, minus the 80 million from the bond. You have a remaining balance of 90 to 120 million. If all 88 million dollars were completely free and available to for use, which I do realize the reality of, that's why I said if they were all available for use, then we would end up with some final remaining balance between 2 and possibly 32 million dollars. That would be where that option would look at. For private, public-private partnership, the cost is pretty simple. You've got 200 million, between 170 and 200 million for the new high school, you've got 80 million dollars in bonds, and then they can fund whatever would be needed. So if the county decided, if you guys decided to put some funding into it, whatever the difference that you need would be covered by the industry partner. And there are multiple different scenarios with this. I've actually spoken to probably four or five different vendors who provide products like this. So if it were advertised that we were to go with this option and we advertised for it, that's when we would start to really see the variances in what they can do. And I know we've seen two presentations from two very different types of companies, and there's all different levels in between. So I know that as we continue to look at school needs, then we are going to need to potentially start looking at some of these different types of options that other school districts across the country are utilizing to help kind of normalize their debt and know exactly what they're going to spend over time. So there's some of that. The major mechanical equipment and maintenance as a surface looks like this, 170 to 120 again for the cost of the high school, minus the 80 million dollars in bonds, minus the 38 million dollars that would be covered for the major mechanical equipment. So it looks like somewhere between 58 and 82 million still needed to complete the project. I also want to note that the Board of Education is also willing to work with you guys on any other funding options that you see suitable or that are suitable based on what you find will be acceptable with the Bond Council and the LGC to help us complete this project. And at this time, I'm willing to take any questions that you guys have about the new high school or the presentation.
I got one question. The PPP, is that, are they willing to take a second?
Say that one more time, sir.
The PPP, are they willing to come in behind the bond?
Yes.
So if you can, can you get Beth and staff, because we're right in the middle of our budget, options, the alternate funding, can they, can they get with and meet with our staff to talk about, to Scotty's point, the positioning that they're willing to be, whatever the interest rates, because potentially is potentially, but we need to look at the various options about all of those options, let our staff look at those, let them talk to the LGC about what they would and wouldn't approve?
I think that one of the presenters has already reached out to the county and is willing to come and do a presentation. Where the school system, and I will be more than happy to get the ones who have contacted me in touch with you to be able to do proposals, but typically that's done through the RFQ process. Once you advertise that you're looking for this, then that's when they'll start to give you those proposals and can give you those exact numbers. And it's very hard for me to be able to pull together an exact budget not knowing where I'm starting from. You know, all I know is 80. So there's a big difference in when you're borrowing 30 million dollars or 130 million dollars of what your interest rate is going to be. So it's very difficult for the school system to be able to give you guys any kind of firm numbers to a company, seeing as we're really not supposed to negotiate your borrowing, but we also don't know what we're asking to be borrowed. But I can certainly get those. I know the ones that I've talked to, and I can certainly get them in touch with you guys, and you guys can work with them to come up with that plan. Would that be helpful?
I think so. I mean, because you haven't met with directly those different funding options.
No, we were, we were included in two presentations with Johnson Control and Duke Energy, but we haven't seen financials, interest rates, that type of stuff. We haven't seen that. We've just seen what they could do, but that's something that, that has to be vetted. We have to talk about interest rates, what they would charge, things like that. And, and I will say that both of them have reached out. We, I wasn't sure if the financial piece that they had talked to you guys would be included in this or not, but we can get that.
So for, so for your question, Gene, absolutely, they can come and give you an information session because we just mentioned P3, and I had some lobbyists come to my office, some local politicians, and got educated on P3. It's been done across the country. North Carolina is sort of behind on it, so it is a different way to finance. Duke Energy, of course, they threw some numbers out, and I massaged those, much like Beth would, tried to figure out where the interest rate would be on the Duke proposal, and it was about 5, 5.5%, which is somewhere in the ballpark. That's non-negotiated. So if, if we're serious about it, then of course, those numbers can get better. We've been told, Tim and I have, with the presentations we've been in, there's some additional monies out there for energy efficiencies. There's grants these companies can apply for that can come off top. Unfortunately, we're a tier-three county. Had we not been, we'd have been eligible for some money from the state that would have made this a lot more palatable. So yes, we can definitely work with you and get you up to speed on what P3 is and what they can or can't do. And it, it is being done across the nation. It's, it's just slow getting started here. There are several schools that have been built by P3s here in North Carolina.
The same factor, the concerning part, I mean, you can get, there's all kinds of options we and you can look at together as far as borrowing, but the bottom line is the debt service is going to have to be paid on the total amount anyway, either way you look at it, you've got to skin that cap. That's what we've got to figure out.
Yes.
Is with the options, the interest rates, you know, what can be done. And I think when we're deep, as we go into our budget, all of those factors are going to help her make recommendations to us of what we can do.
Well, of course, the bond's 80 million, and we all know this is 200, so there's a difference. But at some point, when you give us a number, that will allow us to go to bid. We don't know what bids are going to come in. I'm, I'm pretty sure that some local companies that have done a lot of workforce will bid on it. But estimators, like Tim said, we were going to go out and hire two more estimators, and they actually said, you're just wasting your money because we're not going to come any lower and get, and get hung out. Right now, with the volatility in the market, it's just crazy. And you can say you can put it off and prices are going to go down, but if you looked at industry analyst's projection of labor and labor availability in the future, it's going down each year. So the lack of labor also drives up cost of everything, not just availability of products, et cetera. So we're, we're taxpayers too. I would love to build this for 80 million dollars and not, not have a discussion with it, and it was sticker shot. I was guesstimating where it would come in at, and everybody laughed, so it was way above what I thought. But definitely want to be good stories of the taxpayer dollars, but we are growing by leaps and bounds in our county, and we're, we're going to need an elementary school probably before this one gets occupied.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I will ask staff if you'll fully vet and go through the process of digging into this further.
And Ms. Nieder will be glad to work with you in any way, collaborate with you, anything you need from us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll continue down our administrative matters.
Lee, thank you. At our four o'clock meeting, we went through the remainder of the administrative matters items, and it was all agreed to put these on consensus. So the first item was a request from the Registered Deeds for Approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 in the amount of $207,413.40 to appropriate technology and preservation funds for the purpose of preserving historical deed records. A request from Information Technology Services for Approval of a Contract with Spectrum, and this is to include solid waste in Mooresville, the Mooresville EMS base, and Harmony EMS base, and then to upgrade the Health Department ICATS and Parks and Rec connectivity. And there's also savings through this contract. A request from the Department of Social Services for Approval of a Three-Year Contract for a Cloud Office Solution. This is actually a requirement that is sent to us by the legislature. It is a certain requirement for phone, our phone system, that our current phone system does not accommodate. The requirement is to have this in place in May, and again, there's savings in this solution that we have found, and the board agreed by consensus for a three-year contract for this solution. A request from the Department of Social Services to Proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month. A request from the Finance Department to Award the Sale of Property on Harmony Highway to the Highest bidder in the Amount of $20,000, and this property is located at 4,600 Harmony Highway. A request from the Finance Department for Approval to Adopt the Fiscal Year 23-24 Funding Plan and Certification Form for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This leaves the county match consistent with what it has been. The amount is 405,670, which again, is the amount that's consistent from last year. The only change is this is a two-year process as opposed to a one-year process. A request from the Finance Department to Approve a Resolution in Agreement to Authorize the Private Sale of Certain Surplus Property. A request from Administration for Approval of the Articles of Association. A request from Administration for Approval of the Articles of Association and Agreement for the Central Line of Workforce Development Consortium, and this just included some technical revisions to that agreement. A request from Tax Administration for Approval of the March 2023 Releases and Refunds. And finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for Approval of the Minutes from the Meetings on March 21 and April 4 of 2023. All of these items were agreed to be approved by consensus.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Unanimous on that. As we continue on through the agenda, we have no vacancies on boards or commissions, no appointments to boards or commissions, and do we have any unfinished business?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And that takes us to the public comment period, because it is the second meeting of the month, and the board conducts a public comment period at its second regular meeting of the month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair in the order the names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the clerk of the board. Thank you, Amy, for receiving those if needed. So I would like to open up the public, I don't, yes, like I said, let's go ahead and open up the public comment period. And let's see, we have Amy Miller signed up first.
As usual, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to be here tonight. Unlike most times, tonight, I'm frustrated, slightly angry, and extremely disappointed. I've told by each and every one of you to keep asking questions and to be engaged. Although not always eloquent, I try to be informed and professional, for no other reason than not to disappoint my mom or my wife. For the last four months, I've started to understand why there's so much anger and vitriol surrounding any form of government today. In the last four months, I've been met with resistance and a general lack of interest or respect that I find very hard to tolerate and swallow from the place where I was born and raised, that I'm proud to call home. In the last four months, and this all started with a rezoning request, by the way. I've asked for information, and a lot of times I've received it. There's been a total of nine official requests that have been completely ignored. No, you can go wherever you want to go, or we're not going to answer this, or we don't have records, just completely ignored. Eleven requests for clarification that have been ignored. Seven emails from four departments requesting that I call them and discuss it. People say this when they don't want to go on the record, and I know because I do it. The difference is I'm a private citizen who owns a private business. Now, these weren't complicated questions. They were, were the volunteer emergency service providers contacted prior to Iredell County saying that their services wouldn't be impacted by this rezoning? Questions like that were at best ignored, and honestly, most realistically deemed inimportant to provide to the public. I followed the steps prescribed, emailed, public information requests, attended community meetings, and I've been stoveballed and stonewalled, and it's pretty frustrating. It's a pattern that seems to be developing, not only for me but other community members, where if the questions we are asking don't fit into the nice marketing and development strategy plan that's being written, or a narrative that needs to be followed, it's ignored. We've seen this before with other catastrophes in Iredell County. Items turning up, and the community members being ignored, and they end up in lawsuits. Bad outcomes, poor decisions, and nine times out of 10, the community raised the red flag and the warning, and they were ignored. I'm here to ask you for two things. Will you continue to speak in platitudes and niceties, like every other politician, or will you live up to the commitment and the promise you made when you asked for our vote? We know you. I respect you. I hold some of you in very high esteem. And maybe you didn't know there was a problem before tonight, but you do now. So what will you do about it? Will you be the people of integrity that we voted for? Because the bottom line is, while you sit on that dais, that deus, everything that this county does is done in your name. Are you okay with that?
Time.
Jack Binion, beaten path road in Mooresville. Last month, I dropped a packet off with, for you, which I understand you have in front of you tonight, and at that time, there were 500-plus vacation rentals being advertised for the Mooresville-Lake Norman area. As of last night, VRBO shows 738 rentals in Iredell County, 661 rentals in Mooresville, 771 rentals on Lake Norman. Airbnb shows 382 rentals in Iredell, 557 rentals in Mooresville, 474 rentals in Lake Norman. And Home2Go shows 1,426 rentals in Iredell County. No breakdown for Mooresville, but 1,417 rentals on Lake Norman. As you can see, the short-term rental issue is escalating. I know that you have started a countywide workshop to try and address this issue, and I, as many, applaud you. We know that there are many state bills being presented, but we desperately need some local county ordinances to deal with the issue. We are asking that you continue to work with the county departments through the workshop. Repeating, it is only going to get worse. The summer season is upon us, and we will need some relief if this year will be anything like last year. And again, I thank you for listening to us for the past couple of months and trying your best to come up with something that'll help the issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Snyder.
Tom Snyder, 237 Sundance Circle in Statesville. I got a few things I'm going to throw out there. I know we've got a lot of stuff going on with the school, and taxes, and reevaluation, and a lot of variables coming in on it, and we're hearing all sorts of things. People in the public that I talk to are all freaked out. They're like, our taxes are going to go through the roof. What are we going to do? We don't know yet, because that's going to be all on you when you figure out what you're going to do with, if you're going to do any kind of adjustment. But my first question is getting conflicting numbers. We hear there's 24,000 houses permitted to be built. We hear there's 15,000 houses permitted to be built. Can't get a straight answer. I've talked to numerous people. I just want to get a straight answer, because the question I have is, we're talking about a reevaluation, how we're going to tax everybody, where we're going to have to raise taxes. What about all these houses? If it's 15,000, 25,000, they're going to be paying taxes too. Is anybody figuring that in, factoring in the additional revenue that's going to come in, instead of just whacking everybody that's here already? The builders are going to have to start paying taxes soon as that house is completed, so it's not just going to sit there until somebody buys it. But, you know, I'm hoping that's being looked at closely, because the variable could be anywhere from 30 to 50 million dollars. But again, I can't get a straight answer of how many permitted houses. Planning Board won't give me an answer. I've asked here, but I won't get an answer here publicly, but I'll try to reach out to you as an email to see if someone can give me an answer. But we're just trying to figure out where it's all coming from. Now, as far as the schoolgoers, well, there's got, I'm sure there's still more negotiation that has to be done, because you all just can't write a blank check and say, okay, guys, go build it, push the dirt, put the school up. Hey, if we could all do, if I could do that with my own property, life's great, no problem, no issues. But unfortunately, we live in the real world, so that's got to be a variable. But also on some county spending, and this is something that somebody just pointed out to me, I took note to it probably about two months ago, but someone just said it to me within the last couple of weeks. Hey, do you go past the tax assessor's office? There's four or five brand-new Broncos sitting in that parking lot there. A Bronco base model is about 40 grand. Do they need a $40,000 truck to go around to assess properties? They're not carrying any kind of big equipment, that they need some sort of a sport utility or crossover. They could be going with a smaller car. I hope that's being looked at, not that these counties, that the counties, you guys give a budget, and these managers say, okay, well, we got X amount of dollars, we're just going to spend it. You know, we got to tighten the belt up. Like, everybody else in their household, they look how to cut expenses, save some money, try to budget it. And I think there's some avenues that really can be looked at by all the department heads, because I'm seeing more and more, as I go around the county, there's a lot of waste, and there's a lot of things that could be cut back. And not without cutting services, not without putting anybody out. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. That concludes all that have signed up for our public comment period, so I will close public comment period, and we will continue with our agenda. Do we have commissioner comments and updates? Anything going on with anybody that needs to share? No? Kind of a quiet week. I know we've got budgets and workshops coming up with that, too.
Ma'am, I do have just a small update.
You've got a small?
I do have a small update.
Oh, Lord. I remember.
Seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight days ago.
That is a very small update.
It's a very small number. Seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight days ago.
Should I take notes?
Be a test at the end of this.
Forty-nine years.
Forty-nine years and one day. You're a smart man, Scotty Brown. Forty-nine years and one day ago. You start looking and seeing what happened on that date, and you know what? Typically, you look up a date, there's always a significant historical event that happened. Well, you know, I guess some dates get saved, and history is in the making. There's, as far as I've looked, in the United States, there was no, on that particular day, there was no significant thing. So I believe that the history is being written as we sit here today.
I believe you're right.
Okay? So I do want to say this. So that's, if everybody wonders what that is, that's the 17th of April, 1974. So everybody sees here, I am looking at my phone, but I want to look at a couple of things. And I do believe in a couple of things, and one of them is, there is a little something to astrology, and there's a little something to the zodiac calendar, both Chinese. So if you were born the 17th of April, 1974, you're Aries, which is a ram.
You said it was round?
A ram.
Oh, I thought she was round.
Round, no, ram, is a ram. Okay? And if, in the Chinese zodiac calendar, you're a tiger. And so then you start, rrr, tiger, rrr. So you start looking at the qualities of those. A tiger, powerful and charming, determined, confident and courageous, honest, trustworthy and loyal, generous, sometimes stubborn, and sometimes aggressive. Okay? Does anybody have a clue? I've got to go one other, I've got to go to one other place real quick. And then you go to Aries, and it talks about the traits of him. Again, they're very spontaneous, quick-witted, funny, and sarcastic.
And probably clean.
And clean. Some could even possibly say, like, no, never mind, I won't say that. But, so the only thing to this point, in, on that date, Posh Spice was born, Victoria Beckham was born. I'm going to tell you, the history that's being written is, there was a birthday. There was a birthday on Monday. And so everybody, it was Bert Conley's birthday yesterday. You got to hear all this craziness. So I want everybody to join in with me.
As we sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bert Conley. Happy birthday to you. Thank you. You'll kill me later, correct?
That was one of our new traditions on the board, and I believe we've pretty much rotated it up just about everybody.
Absolutely, except for one.
We got to wait a couple of months for that one. Yes, please.
County manager, since we're going to have the budget meeting coming up, can we maybe have Matthew Todd to come by and talk to us about the 2045 Horizon Plan?
Yes, we can.
That way, we can discuss and see where we are in that, because growth management is a big thing, I think, on my mind, and other board members as well.
Yes, we can. To give an update, I think it's actually scheduled to, for May 2, to be on the agenda instead of our budget workshops.
And also, it's come up multiple times, not just from Tom, but from the schools and different people. We need to get a breakdown of the permitted, approved permits for residential housing and/or any business or housing, and I want to see it broke down by municipality, or town, or what's in the county, because it's been misquoted as to what we've approved. But if we can get a breakdown where we can of what's been approved total, that's on the books, its potential timeline for completion, and what revenue that may generate once it's on the books.
We can do that. And I will say that we are accused of approving all these housing starts, but it's not the county that's approving those housing starts. We have approved some, yes, but the grand total is not this board that's.
That's what I'm saying. I think it's important for us to get the numbers, so we can get the accurate information out, and to see where that growth is going to be. To Bert's point, look at the 2045 update on that and those corridors, and, you know, we've been asked for additional ETJ to be released in the south end, and we're not going to do that. If they want more, they're going to have to just annex, from my perspective. But, you know, we mentioned in the economic development piece, we've got to make sure in our growth that, you know, we're having that balanced growth, where the industrial and commercial is outpacing the residential, because if we ever get to that point, and I know Mooresville is looking at the potential of a moratorium also, from their perspective, because that's where it's the worst in the county. But I think it's important for us to know where all this is, the potential revenue that it could create, and what kind of timeline of what's approved now.
Yes, and I will say that we do give that data to the schools as far as, you know, approved or permitting housing starts and things of that nature. We do try to keep them updated with what, the information that we have.
But they think that we've approved that.
I understand that, but the schools know that we haven't, as far as the data that we've given them, but we'll make sure we get those numbers to you. But I will say this, one of the reasons that economic development and commercial and industrial recruitment is so important is because that offsets what our residents have to pay as far as taxes, because we lose money providing services to residential. We make money when we have commercial industrial, but having residential, we lose money. We don't make money off residential, because we have to provide schools and things of that nature. So you have to have that balance. You have to have a good commercial-industrial mix to offset the cost of providing that quality of life and those services to your residential. You have to have that mix, and you have to have a diversified tax base. You can't, you can't, you know, years ago, before the recession of 2008, 2009, I think we all saw what happened with those counties that were 100% furniture industry. And when that, you know, furniture market went overseas, a lot of counties were struggling and hurting when all those jobs left and went overseas, so you've got to have a good diversified tax base, too. So, I mean, I don't think our economic development group's not here, but, I mean, that's important, and that's something that is built into your incentive policies as far as business recruitment, trying to make sure that, for lack of a better term, we don't have all of our eggs in one basket, and we have a diversified tax base. And that's why it's so important to make sure that you have good managed growth, and you're trying to offset your residential growth with your commercial and industrial, because if it's all residential, you can't afford it.
We're not getting nowhere.
We're not, you're not getting anywhere. So that's very important to, for everybody to understand that. You're not going to make your money on residential. That's not where you make it, and that's not how you, they don't pay enough in taxes to provide. to provide the level and the amount of services that residential use. Your commercial helps do that.
And we're the biggest thing, is we're the closest to the people. So they don't, a lot of the citizens that have moved here, particularly from other states, where their counties may be involved in infrastructure, road maintenance, water shore, here, we're not.
In North Carolina, we cannot.
We're not. And we don't charge, we can't charge impact fees.
Correct. That's illegal.
A lot of the people from where they came from, you know, they wanna know why we're not charging the developers. Well, we can't legally.
Correct.
And so, you know, we're required to build schools, and to provide classrooms, and those type of things. But we also are trying to do that with a balanced growth. But the frustrating part is the developers are not, and builders are not having to pay any kind of impact fees. And we've gotta make sure at a minimum that they're also completing in these developments the requirements they're required to do for the roads and things we've talked about in the past. But, you know, you watch the news every day, and you see gas prices are going up because of the lack of leadership in our country from Washington. You know, the food costs, I mean, people's impact are killing us. I mean, they're very frustrated, and we're the closest ones to them, so we hear that frustration, and we live it, too. You know, it's impacting everyday life for everybody. You know, and people wanna know when we're gonna address our budget, or maybe look at the tax rate and all those things. And we will. We're in that process. It's just not quick.
If I'm not mistaken, it takes about $340,000 a house to break even on one kid. Is it more than that?
Not.
It's more than that.
Okay. So now, average houses are running about 250 to 300, so we're losing on every single house.
Even with one child.
Just for, yeah, with one child. You put, throw a second child in, you throw apartments in there that have two and three kids. Years ago, people moved apartments, they didn't have kids. That was the first time, or they were older folks, or something like that, just getting married. Now, they move in and got six kids, and it kills us hard.
During our budget process, I've been asked before, is where are we in the charge, how we charge for permits to the builders and developers? Where are we compared to surrounding counties and things? I mean, that could produce some revenue.
There's actually legislation that governs that.
So we can't increase permitting without additional legislation.
We're right there with all the other counties.
Yes. You're not supposed to charge more than what it costs you to provide that service. You can, you can build a cushion for, for example, technology needs and things of that nature, which is not an annual need, but like you have to replace your equipment or whatever. So you can build that into it, but you can't just arbitrarily set your fees, $100 a permit higher than what it actually costs you reasonably, that you can reasonably justify the cost of providing that service. You can't do that. It's legislated.
I get it, but that's the point, is that it's creating that void on the other side for what we have to do.
I agree. There's a, there's a very strong building industry that really protects what is paid. I don't know how else to put that.
Yeah.
So...
Then I'll also mention, too, that the Blue Ribbons are proclaiming April Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month, too. Comments or updates? New business? County managers report.
Okay. Just a couple of things to report. Just a reminder that the NCAA district meeting is scheduled for April the 27th. We are hosting it at Cooperative Extension, and it begins at 5:00. So that's something to put on your calendars if you choose to attend. One thing that, I know our board takes a lot of hits, and as elected officials, it kinda goes with the territory, but I do wanna give thanks when thanks is due, and it certainly is appreciation that needs to be shown to all of you, and what you continue to do, what you have done, and what you continue to do to recognize staff, and show your appreciation out of your pockets. You guys have continued to provide meals that you've paid for personally. Just recently, you were very creative in finding a way to provide meals for Telecommunicator Week one evening for our Ecom Department, and two shifts of EMS as well. But you did that by also supporting some of our fire departments that were doing fundraisers for meals. So kudos to that as a double whammy. You supported a partner agency fire department and another fire department through their fundraiser, and used that in turn to show your appreciation to county employees, and that's amazing. You guys have provided gift cards for special events for various departments. You've even volunteered to cook meals yourselves and do that. That's something I've never seen from elected leaders, and it does not go unnoticed. And I wanna make sure that if you're not hearing that appreciation from the staff that you've done that for, that you're hearing it from me, because that is above and beyond. You have shown your appreciation, and where your hearts truly lie, and staff appreciate that. In times where it's not popular to be a public servant, it's nice that your elected leaders show their appreciation, so thank you for that. I don't normally do this, but I do wanna reference one thing, and I know there's been questions. I've heard it a couple of times. I've heard it from a couple of different sources about the Broncos at the tax office. Those were $24,000 apiece. We bought them off state contract. They were not what we wanted, but we could not get any other vehicles. The vehicle shortage that happened during COVID, we couldn't get chips. We are still behind on our vehicles. We still have not gotten vehicles that we ordered two years ago. We're still waiting on some of them. So we were contacted and said, "Hey, I know this is not what you want. I know this is not what you normally buy, but they're on state contract, and they're cheaper than what you budgeted and what you originally planned for, but they're Broncos." And we said, "We'll take them." $24,000 apiece is what we got them for. So I just, I just wanna say that we do try to be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. Sometimes we have to get creative, because it's the only thing that's available to us. We do use state contracting, which is a pooling mechanism that's available to local governments to get products at a good price that's already pre-negotiated. And sometimes, we'll negotiate lower than state contract if we can, and if we can get it cheaper, we will. But I have heard that multiple times, so I do wanna go ahead and make sure the board was aware that that's the story behind the Broncos.
Is ICATS still battling the...
ICATS is having, ICATS is having a really hard time on theirs. Those are such specialized vehicles that we have the federal funds to purchase them, we just can't get them. We're two years behind on getting those, and the problem is, they're not gonna honor that two-year-old price. Whenever the vehicles do become available, we're gonna have to figure out what to do as far as to bridge that funding gap. The money is still there that we're holding from two years ago. They've canceled our order twice. The last time we got VIN numbers, we were ready to go, and then they turned around and canceled our order, even after they gave us the VIN numbers. Sheriff's Office has had a difficult time getting police-packed vehicles. They can't just drive, they just can't go to a regular dealer and get one off the showroom floor. They have to have police-packed vehicles, and then we have to outfit them with the equipment. So we're struggling with that. We've had to get very creative. And I will say this, because we've saved that money, if we haven't gotten the vehicles, we've saved the money, and we've rolled it from one year to the other. Other counties couldn't get their vehicles, so they may have chosen to spend the money on something else. So when their vehicles became available, they didn't have the funds ready to go, so we jumped on them. And we've said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we've saved our money. We still need those vehicles." And we've, we've been able to get some vehicles that other counties ordered, maybe two years ago, but then when they were available, they didn't have the funds ready to go. We did. So we've jumped on those, but we still have a list of vehicles that we've ordered two years ago, we still don't have yet. But we're trying. We're getting very creative. If you look at our Vehicle Services Department, we have a stockpile surplus, but we're not surplusing anything, because we're robbing parts off old vehicles, trying to keep our fleet going, because we can't get parts either. We have got, I hate to tell the story, but we have a vehicle that has a, the driver's side seat is broken, where you slide the seat up and back, it's broken. That part has been ordered for a year, and we still have not gotten it. Just had a vehicle come in that had damaged, blown motor, had the same seat that we needed, so we switched the seat out, and we got the other car back on the road. So we're doing things like that.
I know Bill from the tax office, he told me that, he said, "If I had one request," he said, "My car's got about $400,000 on it." He said, "Let me have a hand-me-down from the sheriff's office." He said, "Just give me something that'll keep going." So he's, he's not asking for a new vehicle. He just wants a, he said something less than $400. So he was funny.
He's got it broken.
It does.
I will tell you, I made a trip to Indiana, northern Indiana, and vehicles are shipped in there, and they're shipped in on rail, chips in the vehicle. The ones immediately, they drive those off, pull the chip to put it in another vehicle to take it to a lot and keep parking them. Just sees, as far as you can see, old RV and manufacturing lots, cars as far as you can see.
No chips.
And they're sitting there, missing chips.
No chips.
No chips. And, you know, we're not exempt from, from the same things. You look at, you know, Randy Marion's dealerships, I'm sure he'd love to have a lot more vehicles on the lot than he has, and so we're not exempt from those things. So thanks for the update.
Absolutely.
And for keeping an eye on prices, it's critical to... Right? Anything further? We did have closed session, but nothing to report out. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion we adjourn.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.